I had an Apple 14, whatever, Pro was the best one. And it died on me, so I took it over to here where I bought it. And it's a connection with one of those, you've got a little wall up there. And they said, no, we're not allowed to do that. And he says, why not? They said, because it's Apple. He said, well, I'll call Apple and they'll send you one. And they said, well, I don't want to wait for your four or five days to get a phone. Here's the one that's broken. There's one that could replace it. I bought this from not from Apple. So give me a phone off the wall, please. Wouldn't do it. So I called Apple. And Apple said, yeah, we'll go, we'll send you one. Or you can come to our store. Closest store, Apple Store is Minneapolis. So I told them.
Problem is
Right now it's Verizon. It bought Android.
All my, all my office was Apple. Because of the, of the programs that we use to design this computer. It's all Apple. It didn't work on PCs.
On Mac stuff?
Right. They do have an InDesign now that is looking for PC, but it's not great. But Android does that. I mean, we have a work, but work is completely different program than InDesign. It does almost the same thing, but it works completely differently. And so in order to stay in conjunction with the rest of my office, I went to Apple. I was at BlackBerry for years. And now my phone and my computer all talk seamlessly. So I have to stay at Apple.
They ingratiate you into the world of Apple and pretty soon you're a prisoner in that world.
Actually, you're a prisoner to electronics anyway?
Of all sorts, yes.
The problem is just that, you know, to be really honest with Steve Jobs and together with Steve, because I can't believe Steve Dupree, because I can never say his last name, were absolute geniuses when it came to operating system. And they, their operating system works completely different than the InDesign operating system. And the problem is that Steve Jobs died. And now they're trying to make it work. And I think you're going to start to see some problems with Apple. That's my personal opinion. I've seen some problems already. So. Don't want to see any more mishaps, but unfortunately, nobody understands that Steve Jobs is more even though he's been in France.
Oh, yes.
That's what we're getting at, Chris.
Yeah, that's crazy, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, some of them do better.
In the wind?
Yeah. That's why I say technology.
Can we buy one more?
Um, I've had this call.
Yes. She did. And she, I wouldn't take credit.
Want to be taken?
I'm getting a little different.
Yes.
I always think about that.
Which is my app is going to get very hotter. So we're reaching for her solo.
Yes. I'm telling you, it's going to be horrible.
Fire.
And John, I'm going to think of my computers, so.
Who was that? And I had a friend on my own. Hi there.
Yeah. So good to have you. I read those as two hours ago.
So what's smoking by the way?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Tell somebody else to shut the door.
Their parents have changed. They're not. I'm taking you there now.
Yeah. No, she didn't pay you money. And then you come.
A little bit of that, you want stuff?
Yes. I agree for
Um, that.
So like with the, with the
I'm very busy with that. Wasn't let out.
And then you couldn't
And then she went out about two months ago now, maybe? And the whole, the whole airline system shut down because of the because of the I was like, I'm going to throw this around. Yeah. The two question was something, you have to ask. And it's like
Yeah.
But they, they were the other, they didn't get the other, that's okay. I mean, I think it was
Could you say how it works?
So something to I don't know.
I just You're hearing each other then?
Yep. You never had to see children. Someone found out. I, I was saying, I'm a mother. We were able to eventually find some stuff yesterday in trash. For someone who
I need to
I'm sure. Probably
Now, if I can just want to be dead.
I don't want to get
How is he going to be general?
And we got on a date, we just sit aside and show
He just wants to play it up and he fights it.
What do you think about it? It comes right there.
It's not safari. I can't get this. Navigate the fat, you don't need to worry.
Don't seem slow. I don't know why I hold on to it.
I'm scared of all of this.
Oh, where is that? Sorry. See when it comes up. Agenda's He broke it. There's nothing there.
Well.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There we go.
Even that page I had two before, click on that.
You gotta hit proposed agenda. You don't, you don't hit down the line further. You gotta hit there.
And I think that's Have you two got that figured out?
I believe so.
The auditor, the auditor has risen. We will call the United States. Everybody would stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President, if you request to change any portion of your agenda or any conflicts of interest, somebody can be right back. If there be none, I would request you to push the agenda. So move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Motion by Greg Palmer, second by Jim Jones to approve the agenda. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing none on favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Is Dan going to be asked?
Dan is excused. The family locked him in the combine cab and wouldn't allow him to escape, so.
Make sense to me? I'll turn it over to Hannah.
Okay, all I'm about to say is written on your agenda. Mike Donlin was honored as the South Dakota trustee of the year for the state of South Dakota. So that's a pretty big deal. Previous winner was like back in the seventies, from another.
What would be a proper way for us to recognize that?
I was going to put it in the paper.
I mean, we as the county commission.
That's a great question. I had an open house, a surprise party for him already and cake and everything.
Would you say commend him?
Commend him for that honor.
And here's his nomination letter. I just highlighted the key points for you two. You don't want to read it all, but yeah, he's done a lot this year, but in the last 15 years.
Certainly has.
I would recommend him. For making himself for the library trustee of the year.
And all who serve the library board unmade and so just position.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
That's for your help with the lawn this summer.
Oh. Sir, sir.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Reset your motion, please.
Move that we commend Mike Donlin for having the name self for the library trustee of the year.
Motion by Jim Jones?
Second.
Second by Luke or Greg. You're going to have to, Greg takes the second. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing none on favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, we'll put it here, so we have to be a pinch hit for him. In the folder, the chairman's folder, you're going to see a maintenance agreement. Prevented maintenance agreement with Schumacher elevator. He developed elevator for such a turned one-year-old, makes 14 from the manufacturer. Expired, so now goes into the annual maintenance contract. He said it is nearly identical to the one he had with us. So he would ask that you approve that.
I don't know. I never saw one in the past, to be honest with you, but that's what it consisted of.
We did.
Yeah, that's what it was about.
Yep, I've been passed.
Twenty dollars a month.
I did have a little concern about the price adjustment provision on the first page where basically that seems to be open-ended as to adjustments. We're signing a five-year contract with an annual price adjustment provision. And the voiding says the contract price shall be increased or decreased by the corresponding increase or decrease in the straight time hourly rate paid plus fringe benefits to elevator constructor mechanics in the locality where the equipment is to be maintained. The straight time hourly rate for elevator constructor mechanics is the actual hourly rate paid to such mechanics. Fringe benefits include, but are not limited to pensions, vacations, paid holidays, group life insurance, sickness and accident insurance, and hospitalization insurance.
So what locality are they talking about? We don't have any such people employed here in this community.
Yeah, the, the contract is with the elevator.
Something Aberdeen?
Elevator company. I believe they are.
Everyday wage for those people in Aberdeen is what they're saying?
Yeah, I don't, like, so it's, but, but then it continues too. It says the adjustment in price resulting from the above price adjustment provision shall not increase the contract price by more than the maximum permitted by any applicable legally issued government regulations in effect at the time that such adjustments are made. I, I have no idea what all that means. But it just seems like a contract with open-ended wording.
Well, it does. I think they got a silver bear on. Who else would you look to?
Well, in what was it? Just stating what the, what the contract says, I think they've treated it as reasonably
Yes.
up until now, but I just, just reading through the stuff that we're expecting to sign.
Right.
There's a lot of open-ended stuff that consumes me some, I guess. We placed, we placed our trust in this company for a lot of years.
But we can see if we could get him on the phone and you could ask him or table till next month.
I think what they're saying is that the government, the governmental authority that regulates elevators decides that they're going to have to have a button in there that says this is a button to call a nurse or for emergency, whatever, you know. We got to put it in there. We got to pay for it. That's what that means.
If there's not, if there's anything I noticed that concerned me in that contract, or there's not concerns by the board.
No, I don't think those used in the past.
Well, I think those are we've had all three of them. Four years, Otis.
That's what I was just wondering.
Schumacher's been the most recent one that we had, and they were the ones that built it. If you want, mark that in some way and we'll have Will explore it further to get a better
When does it need to be renewed?
It was actually dated June
July.
12th of July, 2024, that this contract will commence on the 12th of July, so it's kind of, kind of being presented to us a little late anyway, but
Does that mean we have no coverage presently?
Uh, I think Will said the warranty is expired, so we recovered by warranty until now.
Until right now?
I don't know about right now, but that's what is
When it goes into effect?
I'd say it's right close to that middle of July. I'm going to say that's
I hate to have something really major go wrong and we have no warranty and no
We don't have warranty anyway.
Yeah, that's why I say we better have something.
But they're going to fix it no matter what. We have a contract or not, I'm sure.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve or should we leave it for further review?
It was a, it was a five-year.
Five, five-year.
Five-year with a year renewal?
Yeah, we either, we either have to cancel within the first year or at the end of five years, if we want to cancel with them, is what it says.
Does it say what the first year is?
The price? Um, yeah, it's
Twenty-three thousand a month.
Comes at twenty-three, four hundred a year.
Annual or?
It depends if we pay monthly or semi-annual or annual. We get a 1% discount. Semi-annual, a 3% discount for annual payments, so.
And they do the inspection?
Yep. Inspection and regular maintenance and adjustments.
No, they come to
Clearly, it sounds like my reading.
I think we're pretty good hands on.
I guess if we can cancel the, the first year, I don't remember that part of it. Then I would say we might as well just go ahead and do it. I guess.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Sure.
Uh, motion by Greg Palmer to approve the contract. Is there a second?
Yep.
Second from Jim Jones. Is there discussion on that motion, Luke?
Do we have to put in there how we're going to pay semi-annually? We have to pay annually. Annually, you just pay it all upfront?
3% if you pay
3% if you pay
3%, 3% for an annual payment? Discount?
3% of 2,400 doesn't amount to much.
Sixty-five bucks or something.
Yeah. Besides that, we could just write one check instead of 12.
Right. Yeah.
There's four.
I assume we've been paying annually anyways, so.
Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none on favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The Midwest boiler people, technicians did their work on the boilers and they discovered that a multitude, like the tubes that are inside of the boilers failed and they started their testing. And so Will wanted you to be aware that that was going to drag out the price of having the boiler repaired.
That invoice that I see here is for ninety-three hundred and eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Lot of parts, some mileage. Lot of labor. So is he asking us to approve this?
I think he's asking if he can proceed.
This is what they're saying was required, but that hasn't been completed?
Correct.
This is what they found when they
I think there was an invoice in total due, so I'm assuming they already did it.
So four trips to get it done?
Yeah, four trips.
I know these two.
They're here. There's only one boiler repair company pretty much.
Right, yeah.
You can call them. There's one of our board
And that's all you can
So we need a motion to approve that, Amy?
Or at least for him to proceed.
Okay, so we'll
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim Jones, second by Luke to approve this Midwest boiler invoice for boiler repair. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none on favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Turn it over to Tiffany. I sent the agreements out. That was posing. Questions?
I drew it there. I guess there's a lot of the one question I had, the general price list?
Yep.
That's referred to on there quite often?
Yep, so by law, the funeral home is required to have a general price list, their GPL. And so, yeah, we have one. And when things required are through the funeral home, it will be charged off our GPL that we own data every year.
Okay. Is that available?
Yeah. Yeah, I can send it to you.
I was just curious, because I've referred to that a lot and it didn't give you pricing other than what you
Yeah.
Other than just
I can email it to the commission. I can tell you today, like, on the transportation portion, we're $2.95 a little bit mild. So.
I didn't know how much stuff was on there. I guess I
There's a lot of stuff. I have a lot of other questions about that really are not going to pertain to you, but yes. I will email it out to the commission if it's what each associate.
In the operation agreement, number four, you've got insurance. And you're asking the county to pay thirty-five hundred dollars to cover your increased insurance costs?
Yep, so thirty-five hundred dollars. So we took between the four counties. And we, thirty-five hundred per county is about 30% because we have $5 million on our insurance liability. So that's how we came up with thirty-five hundred dollars for our funeral remittance to cover
That's, that's approximately 30%
Approximately.
Of your insurance. Is the is the your business use 30% of the time for coroner's work?
Uh, that is what we came up with our calculation. So based on our past, yes.
Is that liability insurance?
Yes.
Only liability?
Correct.
So
Liability and then like if, like, so you're, you for an autopsy, for instance, you would contract with the funeral home because we would use our funeral vehicle. County insurance isn't going to cover that, so that includes that also.
Okay, so if you're transporting a body that's cornered
Uh, yes.
At that vehicle, it's wrecked.
It's not, a county issue comes under our insurance side.
Okay, but not your liability?
Well, what if it's
That's private damage. It's your own personal property damage is what I'm saying.
We, we were all elected officials sitting at the table. What if, what if we kill someone coming to a commissioners meeting? It's the same, same thing. We're all elected officials. We asked for the job. We knew what the terms were when we started. I don't think any of us are asking for additional money to cover our insure, liability insurance to get to a commissioners meeting.
But the bodies are in our funeral home, which is a private business. And I am holding them as an elected official in the corner and you guys currently don't supply a building. And so the funeral home does have increased liability for that. And that's what the thirty-five hundred dollars.
Or a vehicle.
Or, yeah.
We don't have that either, right?
So, and, and obviously upfront, gentlemen, you can take the agreement or you, I mean, there's teeny things for negotiation. Or you don't have to. I'm not holding you over there.
What are the teeny things that we can negotiate with?
Well, I'm listening to them first. I'm not putting my cards on the table. I've done business long enough. Uh, so I'm not telling you, you have to do it.
What will this do to your coroner's budget 23rd, 24 versus 25?
Well, I think there's like fifteen thousand and some odd dollars. I think I roughly looked at it this morning. I didn't bring that because I don't think I do too.
What was, Doug, do you remember what the coroner's budget was last year?
Oh, fully. I do know I always, since I've been an elected official, have always been a hundred dollars. So, yeah, but I, I thought it was fifteen something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we live in a litigious world. You got to be ready to cover everything.
Go back to your point. How many dead bodies, someone's loved one, are you taking to the meeting? There's another level of liability when it comes to that.
I was just referring to your statement, what if I kill somebody?
Well, right. But I'm only on the road because I'm hauling a dead body.
What, what, we're only on the road because we come to a commissioners meeting?
But you're not hauling anyone's loved one, which is another step of liability.
I understand, but that doesn't have anything to do with if we kill somebody on the road. Coming to a commissioners meeting to do our official duties as an elected official.
That is true.
The, uh, I think each one of us, when we step up to run for office, we understand the terms of what we're stepping into when we run for office. And renegotiating those terms after we're elected.
Well, my term is up this year, Tim. I don't have to rerun.
That's right.
And then you will, either someone has to run or you have to appoint someone.
Yep.
So this really comes down to protecting the funeral home's liability, which is my bread and butter.
Yeah.
So.
Are you guys providing the coroner and the other counties that you operate in?
We are in Hyde and Pucker.
Okay.
Fall County uses a deputy's shirt, uh, deputy shared up. And they provide, you know, then he does their transporting. The only time he transports for them is if the B ambulance is not available. And then if we go for autopsies, then they're contracted with the funeral home. Which has been the same way for Han County and Hyde County. If the coroner orders an autopsy, they contract with us to transport.
Do you guys also provide deputy coroner, uh, coverage? And they get the
Yeah, I have two deputy coroners here.
Okay, so I can upgrade here?
Well, Candy Lydji is Hyde in hand and Steve Raisel is Hyde in hand. And so if they're not, if I'm not here, they step into the position and then I personally pay them. I mean, out of, I mean, they don't submit a bill to you. If I submitted coroner's call, which is a hundred and some odd dollars, they get it. But to my knowledge, since I've been coroner, I haven't had to use a deputy.
Are you the coroner in Hyde County?
Correct. It's an appointed position.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I pulled up for you.
Okay. With it, uh.
Yeah, it's fifteen, two fifty.
Yeah, so roughly.
So the, um, the two-page scheduling, I guess. Five and six. The difference there is the cooler or not cooler? Is that true?
No, the sheltering remains. So let's say we have after 24 hours, we still have someone in our possession that technically is under the possession of a coroner. So it's called a, like a sheltering of remains. You'll just to have them in there for expected liability, it will be a hundred dollars a day.
What's the difference between that and the next one?
The cooler, you're using a cooler.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
Correct.
The cooler or not cooler?
Yep. Sorry, I missed that part of your question.
Okay. What do we do on the other? It's one of the
Yeah, I mean, most of the times there's, there's, most of the time they're somewhere in 24 hours. Either they then turn over to the funeral home that they select or we're transporting for autopsy. There was a case last year that I held it a little longer, but that was difficulty of the family, but they still hadn't selected the funeral.
Are there times when you are wearing two hats at once?
Yeah.
Okay, is one of those hats coroner and the other one is the anticipated role you'll be playing in the disposition of a dead human body that the county's going to have to pay for the disposition of?
Um, so like, I can't, I'm not saying to my recollection right now, just trying to think back on my cases, I can't think of one, but that doesn't mean that it hasn't happened, but I, you know, when it, most of the let's just say last two years, when they become an indigent burial, the family has selected me, but then I, you know, obviously instruct them to come to duck to apply for burial assistance. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I just wonder
Are you saying like on claim remains?
Yeah, what are you done in coroner? When what event has occurred in
When the family has selected a funeral home
Okay.
And there's no further investigation.
Okay.
So
Could that be dependent upon what a judge is going to rule in particular case and what a grand jury might rule in a particular case?
I mean, we've never taken it that long, but yes.
It could be a long time.
It could be. You know, because if the state's attorney says, no, you can't turn the body over yet because of X, Y, Z investigation, then that body's going to stay in custody of the coroner.
Of the coroner, not the funeral home?
Not the funeral home because it's still under investigation, so it still stays under the hat of the coroner.
Okay, so if it's in the possession of and the responsibility of the coroner under those circumstances, does the coroner have an arrangement with the funeral home?
Well
For that story?
I'm it's me right now, unless you would like to go seek someone else out.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all. I'm just saying it's harder to figure out what role you're playing
Yeah.
At some point, isn't it?
Yeah. But I think that's what small communities are against all the time.
I actually think if we're going to ink an agreement with our elected officials, they should go to our state's attorney for advice. There's a lot of legal wording
Well, I sent it to him. Where is it?
He hasn't gotten us about it, but we can, now that you've presented it to us, we can get it to him and see whether, what his advice is on signing legal agreements with our elected officials.
Well, the one side isn't an elected official. You're making, you do what you guys got to do is a funeral home agreement.
Right.
But yes, there is a side where But yes, there is a side where there's a little pay increase per call for things on the coroner's side. So, do understand these are two separate agreements. So.
Is this the same thing that you presented to him?
Then the county, yep, Hyde County has two adjustments that we'll make and they anticipate signing it in November. Fall County has one adjustment to make and they anticipate signing it in November, and same with Potter. So when I say there's very little room for negotiation because we're not going to piecemeal different agreements for everyone, that's not fair. So, I already sent it to this whole commission and I have sent it to Elton, tried to initiate conversation and I got none back. You're welcome to send it to Elton again, but to me, that was part of why I was coming today, to have conversation. So you, I mean, you guys gotta do what you gotta do, like I told Hyde County, which I had a great meeting this morning. The agreement either needs to be signed in December, where I step away as a coroner and I step away as using my funeral home for coroner services. So I mean, I just, it's not a threat, it's just strictly upfront, um, to let you know where we're at.
Fair.
So yeah, I thought this meeting was, you guys have had discussions, you did your research, you talked to your attorney, and we would have a productive discussion.
We haven't, I haven't communicated with talking about it unless.
Doug, you got status? I didn't see, I didn't see this till.
I sent it to Doug and I sent it to the chairman and I sent it to Dana, so that's.
I seen, I seen Elton was included in the email, so he does have it.
Well, he must have known then that this was on calendar for today and he didn't have any objections, he didn't make them know.
It's possible.
So, I mean, I can come back in November, but I'm not going to keep coming back and not get direction. So, so there will have to be some communication the remainder of this month so we can either move forward or not move forward, which then gives you guys time if you're not moving forward, how to plan.
Doug, have you talked at all with Elton about this?
Yes.
Do you know, what, how would you read his action?
We'll get to from up with words in his mouth.
Are there some issues that we need to resolve from his perspective?
No, I just don't want to speak on his behalf.
Well, if you can live with no decision till November, I guess we're going to have to make it in November.
Yeah.
I don't have any objection to it at all.
I don't know what you mean by, have you seen, have this, right here from here, my guys, if he doesn't have any objections? So.
So yeah, I would just encourage communication with me throughout the month so that we can have a direction.
Sounds fair.
You want me to talk to Elton, or you guys are going to individually?
Who's, who's liaison?
I don't know.
Doug will be here later today.
He will?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, we'll talk to him then.
We could have a second legal executive.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Jay, are you up? Do you have any questions? I'm just here for any questions that you may have about the info tech for cybersecurity and ID for the county. I definitely had agenda to talk about stuff, just wanted to give you clarification if you had any. So, I guess I'm all ears for questions. As we kind of remember, we talked about, um, the monthly, we'd like to have that email included with that, uh, we can help with that migration too, to get it all onto one, one roof. So we can absolutely help with that. Yeah, firewall to each location, thanks to last time, no one had one comparatively. So yeah, I guess, I guess here for any questions you guys may have, any clarifications on info tech side.
The company that we use for common air system, probably next month, to go over there as well, so.
Yeah, that's the, that's the software side, we're strictly the cybersecurity side. Like I said, they can't always exist, so it's, it's not a problem having.
Any questions from our departments? Let's see, let me figure.
Like I said, we're waiting, um, that setup possible, guys, if you don't do the email, if you do the emails, it's a small migration, we need to help out with that. Yeah. We want to help you guys. It's set up in the hardware at one-time cost, and obviously the monthly is reoccurring, that's a standard budget, very rarely we have to think up and over that. Call them one-time or thirty times, hopefully not calling them thirty times, you don't want that, if something's wrong, uh, we have, we're here to help.
But the, the email side of things is the part I was questioning for right now. I know you take it all, transition over there, I don't, no, I guess.
It doesn't have to, they can remain separate and you can watch this and connect your stuff too. So, if you're looking maybe not necessarily at the email portion right now, it'd be the month, monthly one-one plus library highway.
Right.
So if you're not wanting to do that email, which is okay, they can, they can be separate, we just won't be able to help out on some of those email questions just because we want that backend knowledge or those alerts when it's not under our jurisdiction.
Uh, do you have much, do you guys have much trouble with emails at the moment?
Is there too much spam? Forty or fifty spam letters a day?
I don't want to do so.
You do too?
Yeah. Yeah, the filter catch is online and sometimes unfortunately I just think that I would want to catch and it delays my efficiency with the work, but now I just check it about every half hour when I'm expecting things, but, um.
I think that's, that's apparent with these.
Yes, it is, it is, unfortunately it is, but it is protecting us from getting junked, so.
I think one of the things that's slightly different there with the, um, the defender plan one, has that extra layer of security we're supposed to actually put those ones and put those attachments, not necessarily.
And test them before.
And test them before it gets to the end user. Whether the, the email may look bad and terrible, that's fine, but it's, we're talking about if, uh, someone's other account, or my, or let's say just someone in town's personal account gets reached and we're watching those communications back before it's actually going to open that back up. For the rest, so, like I said, there's additional.
This would be very beneficial.
There's, there's additional.
I saw your package and this is, I mean, we've needed to have this in my opinion, since I've been, I mean, way before I came onboard here. Um, and he's, what he is selling us is definitely something that we need to utilize, I, in my opinion, I mean, this day and age, our computers are our work, and if our computers go out, we're in trouble. I mean, you're presenting that cost.
I don't know if anyone was here last time, but, and on the library side?
We stopped, we stopped talking, Doug.
Okay, I guess I don't know if there's any other state programs that are affected by every time.
We looked, uh, we'll, we'll utilize that, the computer wipes, the freeze, um, we'll utilize that, we'll utilize that as well too, um, but the. Yeah, and that's fine, um, essentially you want to make sure that, like through the firewall and stuff, want to make sure that they're not going to sense that they can't get to, shouldn't get to.
Right.
And that's what the firewall can come to play on some of those categories. So, yeah, who's helping down the broader PC, so we're not going to manage the, the ones that kids use, uh, because in any event, something happens there, we can just like, we'll save those on, yeah. There's never, there's really nothing of value, so essentially we just like, so we're not going to include those inside our tech watch. But her PC, uh, come back if something will wash it. And these numbers are, you know, standard, are meant to not set us going, so if we get here and like, well, maybe we don't need that one, we'll go down to thirty in that much, you guys get a new one, we'll go up to thirty-two. So they're very, very dynamic, we have email accounts anyway too, so.
We don't utilize any Office 365 now, obviously.
It's department-based, like Shane's got it and Suzie has it, you have?
I'm sorry.
Office 365.
Um, I have it, but I haven't personally, and so I can add it, but.
That's your brain account, they're together, they don't have a same page.
Shane, is your whole office using the, all the employees, or is it just on your machine?
It's just on my machine.
Okay. It would be beneficial for us all to have it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's nice.
Continually standardized, so we can flow what's up too. And ma- monitored and managed too, so in the event, uh, someone's able to get into an email account and they create a fork, we're going to trigger on it. So, we'll, we have checks and balances as well, so. A password gets reset, uh, we're going to get a trigger on it, so calling it, make sure it was you. Hopefully no one puts info tech emails to jump right, right, this, we'll get, we'll get an alert at that point, but just making sure you are the one using it. So, and then also enabling that all that verification, um, start getting the SharePoint, um, that's not something probably today conversation, but we can start utilizing Office 365 and get lesser line on that server. So if that server goes down, it's dead in the water, um, with the information on that server too, but if you go to a SharePoint site, just for portaloneoffice.com, you can access all that information, whether you're here physically or at home, a Blizzard, whatever it may be, you can still at least get to that information in a secure way.
Will you set up any VPN stuff?
Yep, absolutely.
People with?
Yep.
Yeah. That's included with, that would be part of it?
Yep, part of that firewall management. And right now for the email, um, portion of it, we just had the standard email plus SharePoint, uh, we have it included in that business standard package, which has Word, Excel, PowerPoint, that is the next level. We're just trying to keep it as much, what you want today and not necessarily the whole bouquet though. Start getting into the premium package, uh, which has EDR built in, it has a lot of other security features. That's again, for the outline too, we can budget that stuff later, since essentially you guys are discreet. So we're trying to be mindful that, that there's other, there's, if we can get you guys on, we're just trying to bring the standard in.
So when, if you said quarter today, what, what would be the timeframe again?
Yeah, so we'll probably start talking, planning, um, we do, put a lot of time in that planning part, it's probably going to be quarter one planning and quarter one execution, is my guess.
So is there anything in the, in the short term that you would, you want to beef up any security issues right away, so-called, so to speak?
Not that I'd dive in all the way into it, um, if you guys have problems or issues between now and quarter one, we'll solve, kind of what the city is doing right now, if you had some questions yesterday morning, we had, we're not fully on service right now, but we're working on helping out.
How vulnerable are we presently?
Pretty vulnerable, I guess, uh, there's not a whole lot of security.
The property has that in it, I would say.
Talking, you know, user, userability and security are two different things, if you have some of that userability, uh, security is, is not exactly up there. I would consider, um, the county in the low hanging fruit category.
Wow.
We want to get you out of that low hanging fruit category.
Uh, this discussion is not new to us by any means, and I will admit publicly that for me to advise myself in this discussion is completely helpless. I, I have, I can't spell the word, I avoid it at all opportunities, I, um, some, sometimes I can see the advantages and sometimes I think this isn't society going in the right direction, I don't know, but it, uh.
The same for us too, we don't, we don't know anything about, to, to sit here and be on the commission, that's not our role, but we know the technology part of it, so, that's, uh, that's what we do, to take off your plate.
So really, we got to just figure out between the three plans, and you've got which one you want.
I would say the one that one is out, I would consider.
Yeah, I think that was.
I think we talked about that last year.
Two of the big things is whether we do the email or not, I mean, it's, it sounds like it'd be, um, the discussion a little bit would have, you would really, you would benefit from it.
We're going to do it, we can do it all.
And they would like to have that option, I think.
Does that change your email access?
No, unless you have an hub, there's two outlets inside of that, uh, yes, that will change output ones, but the common ones you have now, minus the backup, if we get to that point, that migration, but no one changes it. We'd be there for the creation of emails or if someone leaves the county, uh, it's a simple email to us saying, four forty-five, shut this account off, uh, so they'll no, no longer have access, it's not too bad. Across the board, their PC, their emails, their SharePoint, it's done. On the flip side, created, next Tuesday, we're having a new deputy auditor start, start reasoning, all that email created, whole accounts created, um, temporary patch could set up, so Tuesday morning, I'd talk with your.
So you, you'd work with all, I mean, do we have to have a contact person per se?
Hundred percent do, uh, some departments like having that, uh, as their department, some people have a, um, I would call it a commissioner liaison, you've seen that before too, uh, it's really whatever you guys decide as your hierarchy. We can break it out, um, yeah, so when we send the, like the asset inventory, uh, we'll have all the departments broken out, so we'll be able to see who has what for computers, how old they are, so budgetary stuff, we'll be able to look, you know, years and things like that, so.
You kind of compile that?
Yep.
For us?
Monthly or quarterly, or as, as needed.
Cause that would be one thing, I guess, we've talked about a long time too, is that, trying to get a, some kind of, lot of playing field as far as when they can be replaced and.
Well, for example, October twenty twenty-five, all of those ten PCs are done. So we would have, we've been having those conversations with our clients for two years now, at least two years, same like, we have two or three now, we have three or three now, so we're not bad with sixteen.
Right, exactly, that's what, that's too often, unfortunately.
Yeah, so it's communication too, uh, just seeing what you have, where we can improve, um, this time, next year, we're saying, all right, we're, if we had extra money, we could improve, yes, right, that's the one you have, this license rather than, just saving that in a piece, but that's a conversation we'll have. Kind of the virtual CIO.
So if we went quarter one, but these next three months?
Yep.
If we had some technical questions, you'd answer them?
We'd help out once again.
Per, I mean, gratis, I guess so to speak, or how do you do that sort of?
Yep, yeah, so we, uh, we helped out once, even yesterday we had, um, just them install our, our connection, uh, connecting devices and we're able to jump on their computer and get to their email portion resolved. That day, like I said, they're still not fully migrated over yet, so, hope it doesn't happen, but we are here, we benefit us.
I move we approve the email one, the one with the email transition.
That would be considered the monthly one, if you look for quote numbers, that's fifty-seven thirty-nine.
Is it renewed annually?
Uh, it, it's a monthly, um, but it's a hundred and twenty day contract.
So it's quarterly?
Quarterly, essentially, yeah.
But we're not, we're not tied to a particular quote price-wise for four quarters?
No, it, it's, it's very dynamic, so like I said, if you get a new email account in, that monthly changes slightly, if you take two computers off because you don't need an email, that's going to reduce that. So, but it's pretty standardized across the board per month.
And you guys are willing to dive into this for no more than a three-month commitment from us?
We want, uh, you guys to be a part of us and not, uh, dictating three-year contracts or even. The one thing, one contract that's in it is that firewall one, uh, just because we get that hardware for free. Yes, we're, we want you guys to want to be in this with us rather than contractually obligated.
Did you make the motion, Greg?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second.
The motion was second to approve which contract, Greg?
The monthly one with the, with the email migration of Office 365.
Okay.
Do we accept, do we, do we need to add in there to start January one, ideally?
You don't have to for, for us, like I said, we'll, we're going to have to clear off our plate as soon as we're ready to bring it out, we'll start, we'll probably come up here probably two times to have a great roadmap of what everything's going to be done, so when we do that migration, uh, there's no, no stall.
Will you meet with each of the department heads?
Yes, probably.
Okay.
And we'll have that scheduled out, it's not going to be like, hey, we're coming up on Friday, it's going to be, we're coming up in three weeks, two weeks, a lot of time, like I said, we'll scope it out, there's, there's not the only county, so we have a really good idea of probably what's we're getting into, just want to make sure we're going to be curveballing.
Okay, so there's a motion by Greg, uh, second by Jim Paul, or Jim Jones?
Jim Paul. Great job.
This, this is, or Greg Jones, this is something that, asking for discussion on the motion, do our department heads agree that this is probably the best interest of operations for the county?
I consider it a leap forward.
I do.
Can you think, okay?
Any other discussion on the motion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's been all Pam Kevin.
We'll get you guys up there, you need to be at, pretty much standard up and. What I'll do is I'll head back and I'll get updated quotes considering the date and the valid till. And then I'll send everything over to the country, because we have that MSA, which is our master service agreement, which just take, it's all about the legal jargon, but that's about one twenty eight hundred. So I'll be a part of that, but also your signature. We'll get you guys in again, schedule and talk.
Do you need to make a motion to let Jim sign it or something?
No, I think you've succeeded in that.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, have a great day.
Nicole, good evening, nice.
Hello?
Severe?
Second day.
So do you, do you want to open though?
I tell you what, go ahead.
I'm going to look at the company's statement, Greg.
All right. Um, all right, so the usual budget reports. Budget expenditures are at fifty-six point nine percent at this point in the year, which we were always hearing we'd be under by quite a bit because we cut back one point three million of projects. So we're, we're sitting where we should be. The revenues are coming in a little higher than estimated. So. Right, I know, it's kind of nice to see that. But, um, so we're, we're right about where we need it to be. But, let's see. So as far as my cash worksheet goes, my cash balance is at six hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. We're withholding the two funds for the bridge and the striping. And counting on our income and the bills that we have yet to pay for September, we should be sitting around five hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars in our cash balance. And looking at our budget status. Now this works so much better than trying to do it standing up. Looking at our budget status, we're, we're looking at finish in the year with one thousand seventy-six thousand, one million seventy-six thousand left in our budget. So, I don't know. We're, we're doing our best not to spend money, but the bills keep coming.
But back to the, the bridge and the striping, the striping hasn't happened yet, I take it that?
It's happened, we said it got billed yet.
Okay, and we're done?
We'll be getting that here within the next month.
And we take the bridge will happen yet?
No.
No?
I had to talk to the engineer, the contractor. He had a couple of projects there on his crane, they were on, he spent a month waiting for that, so he's not.
But it'll be out next year, I assume, and the, the funds are, I mean, it's all, there's not a time restriction on that necessarily, or is it?
We'll just keep it posted and barricaded up on one side.
I would have to file a report with FEMA. You got to know that. For extension or whatever.
Yeah, well, for extension.
That's not a problem to be there?
Not usually. From what they said, it wasn't a big deal, they just need to know. And then when the striping gets paid, we'll take that out of the, out of the savings area, the reserve area. Once we get into next year with those bridge funds, Doug and I were talking, he learned we can't create a fund to make those obvious. I think we're, I don't know, just keeping them on my sheet here. And just knowing, just knowing that we can't spend that money is good enough.
What do you mean by not obvious?
Like, um, we can't create a line item in the budget to show that sitting there.
But if you have it up here?
Yeah.
Itemized it, I think that makes sense.
I think that'll be okay, we know it's there, we know what it's for.
Why can't we just do a line item? Because you can't, you can't, they'll only be used for that.
Well, that's, no, that's why.
And that's what this is for, I'm not sure why, I know he looked into it and found we can't create a, a fund is what he was.
I think Luke is right.
Because if you create a fund, that's a, that'll have a fund.
Right.
That'll only be used for that, that's why you don't want to set that for a fund.
I think you're better off just doing it the way you're doing it.
I was going to say, I think if we can look at it here and say it's still there, we're going to save it out, it should be good. But, but anyway, so we're looking at end of the year with seven hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars cash worth. That is if that five hundred thousand dollar transfer in comes on later, which like I said, we don't have to do all of it. But Doug was saying for next year's budget to cash, well, we need five hundred thirty thousand, I don't know, one thousand in our cash balance at the start of the year. So that's our goal.
Is there any small removal expense figured into this?
There is not.
Perfect world budget.
We're, we're anticipating tons of those. Let me see that, because we don't want to curse ourselves.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're in a predicament when we're wishing to not curse ourselves. With small removal expense.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll be okay. Um, we can always take a loan, or I guess it's more of a balanced forward on those.
STP.
SDP funds, if we need, but I really hope we don't have to. So, so that's kind of our hotline. So last time we discussed, well, you and Jeff discussed setting a speed limit on North Commercial Avenue in St. Lawrence. And I guess before I change topic, I should say, do you guys have any budget questions? I don't know, those are for us. So here is a resolution for actually setting that speed limit on North Commercial Avenue in St. Lawrence.
Set at what?
Setting the speed limit?
Yeah, at what though?
At twenty-five miles per hour instead of thirty-five.
From, from turning off the highway north onto the St. Lawrence Road to basically north edge of town?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what St. Lawrence, thirteen hundred miles, they want that?
I spoke with Shirley and she said, we will support you, she said, we have had so many people ask for that, I'm glad you're doing something.
It's only thirteen hundred feet, it's not going to kill anyone, drive for a hundred mile.
It's not the overall.
So you don't have a lot of it, do you?
No, no.
Yeah.
No.
Yes?
I dragged that road.
It's only a quarter mile there, slow down.
I'll make a motion, do you read the?
Doug, when you were shared, you monitored that road for two days because of complaints on that road, what did you catch speeding?
Yep.
I was going thirty-seven once and I was going thirty-eight the other time, as I entered from the fifty-five to the thirty-five.
She was.
Like down.
I thought they gave you five or six miles.
No, they didn't, they didn't give you.
Nicole, you should read the resolution before we approve it, or move to approve it, if you want.
Hmm, please. Okay. So, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, setting of speed limits on North Commercial Avenue in St. Lawrence. Whereas South Dakota codified law thirty-two twenty-five nine point one says, "Any board of county commissioners may determine and establish speed zones upon all or any part of the highways under its jurisdiction and upon streets and highways on the request of and after any other local authority, including any road district. Having charge of the maintenance of the highway has declared its intention to post speed zones. Such speed zones shall be conspicuously posted at the beginning and ending of the zones and whereas it would be advantageous to public safety and whereas an additional benefit of a lower speed limit is the reduction in road maintenance costs and now therefore be it resolved that the commissioners of Hand County hereby intend to lower by ordinance the speed limit on North Commercial Avenue as follows. Between South Dakota Highway fourteen and Sixth Street for a distance of thirteen hundred feet, which is currently set at thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Be it further resolved that the Hand County Highway Superintendent is directed to promptly adjust the signs appropriately as stated in this resolution."
So we're going to range from twenty-five to fifty-five?
Well.
No, no steps.
I, I noticed one little thing at the bottom, it says dated this first day of twenty twenty-four.
Wow, I'll fix that before I have me sign it then.
We can pin it in there when, when I sign it, if it's approved.
I welcome to accept the resolution twenty twenty-four fifty dash fifteen, setting the speed limit on North Commercial Avenue in St. Lawrence.
Don't we have hand ordinance too?
That will come next, this will.
Yeah, we'll bring that.
So I'll second it, nobody else has.
We've got a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, sorry. Farmer?
Aye.
Jensen is absent and excused. Wrensmann?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes.
Right. So, last topic, um, is the rake applications. I'm going to use the checklist because it is a summary and all the rest of it is a lot of information. Um, we have had ten, well, there's nine townships, but ten structures that have asked for rake funds. The cost to, to the rake fund is going to be three hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. The balance in that fund right now is above four hundred thousand. So we should be fine and accepting all of these. I guess. I don't know, do you usually make a motion to accept the applicants, or how does that work?
Usually it's by case.
Usually it's case by case? Okay, well, but I guess we.
Do you want to just go down the list?
I can.
There are a lot of them.
Do you guys want to see details?
Have you, have you reviewed or looked at all the, or heard you know of all of them?
Yeah, I've checked everything, um. Put everything in, in order.
Well, that.
Yes.
More to be, more to be.
Are they all culvers, going to be?
Uh, will be culvers.
All will be?
Yeah.
All of these townships have their opt-out or tax in place?
They do.
They're required to have?
Yes. Riverside has one, Re Heights does not, but since Riverside is the one who's kind of going through the application process.
We can't do those all at one, else we'll.
Well, what they told me is if somebody contests one of them and you have them all up together, then they own the authority.
So what do you want to do, like, I make a motion Alden Township, thirty dash zero seven nine six dash one three five seven? To be accepted? Is that how you want it?
I think just.
Just all the town? Okay, I'll make a motion Alden Township, second.
Motion in a second, is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye. Aye. Well, just wanted maybe more question, general question. So the, the bid that we have there, that's obviously somewhat of an estimate, percent number?
Yeah, the quotes from true advice deal.
These are the, so they are the actual culprit.
They are an actual culprit.
Comes in, right?
They are.
The contractor bid varies a little bit.
Which is primarily going to be.
But it, it varies for each, each one's different because of where they're putting it. And I see there you got the contractors bids changed on all of them. So, I mean, each one of them have been, you've went through everything on each one of them.
Yeah. We've spoken with the contractors, spoken with the townships.
And the townships know what they're getting into, and they know they got to pay their, their portion, so.
Yeah, they know what they're going to be.
And what, these are all up at this year's price, sir?
Yes.
True, and then you all, you all order them basically? You hire?
I'm trying to be, yeah, I'll order them.
I would move for approval of Logan's project.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Logan, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Logan is approved.
Much to approve Midland Township, second.
Motion in a second to approve Midland, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Midland is approved.
Miller Logan Township?
Miller, you said?
Yep, Miller Logan.
That's just the combination one there.
Yes, there's, I'm assuming these are on township lines or.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Miller Logan Township, is there a discussion, you were going to say something?
Did Greg just second that?
What one?
I've heard a second.
Jim second.
Okay.
Is there a discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nope.
Tied.
Okay, line nine, Miller, just straight Miller, is that a separate project? Separate from Miller Logan, move for approval of nine project.
All second.
Motion Jim Jones, second Luke Wrensmann to approve Miller Township, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Miller is approved, Mondamen?
I'll make the motion to approve Mondamen Township project.
Second by Luke Wrensmann, is there a discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Mondamen's approved, Plato?
I'll make a motion on Plato.
Second.
Second Greg Farmer, is there a discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Plato's approved, whoops, opposed, same sign, Plato's approved.
I'll move on Pleasant Valley Township.
Second.
Motion Jim Jones, second Luke Wrensmann to approve Pleasant Valley, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Pleasant Valley is approved. Riverside Re Heights?
I'll make that one.
Luke Wrensmann?
Second.
Second Greg Farmer, discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Riverside Re Heights is approved.
I'll make a motion to approve Spring Hill Township, second.
Second Jim Jones, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Spring Hill is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
I will just make a statement that this rake funding, although there's no such thing as free government money, is a godsend to these townships. although there's no such thing as free government money, is a godsend to these townships. Drilling is helping with getting these crappy old decrepit structures out of our county.
Hopefully it'll keep funding it.
Yes.
At that point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There are three plans for your consideration. Staff has looked over and feel comfortable present to you for approval. First one being the Bebo second edition, which is in Carrollton Township. The second, Metro River Water, which is for Danielson. Segment of that, and then also the J. Courtney, their own boss.
Move for approval on Bebo. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Bebo. All of our department heads agree that everything is in order? Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries. Metro River Water.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Metro River Water. Everything is in order on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
Motion for lawmaker, a 1-1-5 for approval.
Motion, Jim Jones, second great bummer. So is there a discussion on that motion? Everything is in order?
Court maker one?
Yeah.
Um, we are going to change it off page three because there's no township on that one. We're waiting for a call from... Everything on it's good to go. We just want to set the township sign on also.
That's just a clear call.
Yeah.
Everybody's okay with that correction? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
And there's one of those that needs the chairman's... There's one that needs to be signed.
Okay. Is it in there, in here?
General Fund Financial Report. Basically, I'm just going to read this to you rather than things to do. The fund revenue is 54.2% of property taxes. The Treasurer's Office gave me their input. There was a collection of $53,000 in property taxes exclusive to the county, so that number will change as a result of closing out the month. The revenues for the entire fund are at 64%, which is an acceptable level. As far as expenditures go, the veteran service budget is at 92.5 spent, which means I would request that you consider a contingency transfer to supplement, basically, by transfer funds into that account so it doesn't go into the red.
You know how much?
I would work with Amber to find out what she predicts for expenses through the rest of the year, but as long as we know you're going to do it, we can get it set up and approve it in November.
Yeah.
No objection?
No.
Let's see, I made an error when processing the TIF fund. Previously, we used to just do this in office, and then the state auditor said that because it does constitute a fund transfer, it was supposed to be approved. So I brought it to you two months ago to approve the fund transfer, but in the meantime, Carolyn had already done it internally, so...
Do we need to do that retroactively then, approve it?
No, basically, you're just approving the transfer back.
Move the money back.
Yeah, so that's...
Motion for oil. Second. Motion and a second to approve that transfer of $1,750. Is there a discussion? I will say that I'm thankful we have employees that are so efficient, they do stuff twice. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
The next one is the combined statement of revenues and expenditures. If you look at that on there, you're just going to see basically the same pattern as last month, where we are collectively creeping towards an equilibrium with our expenses versus our revenues as we go, so that's a positive sign. Direct and solid cash report. I've usually put that in a minute. That came today because that's just what happens on the first. So I don't have that for you, but I can send it to you after the meeting. And then this is the Treasurer's report of taxes collected, if you want to just pass that around, and then I'll also make that available to you in an email. Arlen might be here by now, but we'll get back to him. Do you have any other questions related to the financial report? I'll be sending out an email probably within the next 10 days to have departments look at their budgets and determine if they think they're going to have satisfactory budget authority to last through the end of the year, so we can get the bulk of our balancing act done in November instead of waiting until December again. Revised, if you open that up in my auditor's report, this was me using a guy who wanted to sell us a new website as a mechanism to get an estimate. And so basically, this guy's special is producing websites for government entities. And so he and I worked together and came up with this, so that you can see it. So this estimate was based on us taking our website, which we currently participate in the South Dakota Association of Counties, and we only paid a couple hundred bucks for it, and ramping it up to something that is rock solid, meets all the security protocols. And just so you have a frame of reference on what the cost was, I'm going to scoot to the bottom here, page 38. Somebody beat me there?
I'm at the bottom.
Is it at the bottom?
Um, a cost?
Yes.
I don't see one of them. I just see the inventory design at the bottom.
Like, that's all blurred.
There's a few, because I... oh, here we go. Website delivery for six... oh, here we go. $1,500 of annual maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay. Includes... so there's three different things, or is this a total thing?
I think there's three different categories.
So it's on page 32 of the document.
Yeah, that's what mine says, but I can't open it.
Sorry, I can't read it.
Do you want to?
Click on it, but won't.
Okay, so basically, the website design's $1,500 bucks. Site map, which is taking our current website, migrate unit, the other one's $900 bucks, and then the annual software subscription's $1,500 bucks. So initially, the upfront's $3,900, then it's $1,500 here. Basically, short of just the website design, everything that either the infotech or connecting point would do for us, they're going to cover that. So I think it would be a waste of money for us to pay somebody to migrate our webpage over, just based on security. Granted, the websites look pretty cool and they're nice, but when I look at the traffic on our website, it's not very high. Yeah, so that your guys' page catches the most traffic just because of agendas and stuff like that. And then the highway department, because of your bulletins about construction work and stuff, so... So that's an expense that you won't have in the future.
How much is it for the one from the... did you say $200? About $200 for our...
At $250, man. Yeah, it's pretty cheap. And granted, it's very basic, but it's for just a static place for your information forever scroll. It's pretty good.
Where did you find it?
Page 32. Well, I went past it already. Resolution 24-16 memorializes the destruction of the 2022 election materials, including the primary election. Want me to read that one?
Motion.
I'm going to skip the what, where, and where items and get right to the action on there.
Can you throw away our trash?
No, therefore be resolved. Any county commissioner takes note of such destruction and passes this resolution of permanent record at the same. Recognize that the Hand County Auditor is the person in charge of elections as disposed of by fire the ballots, envelopes, and other election materials from election year 2022 as provided by statute.
Move for passage of Resolution 24-16.
I'll second it. Got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-16. Is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, I'll call again. Farmer?
Aye.
Jensen is absent. Wrensmann?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Motion passes.
The state mileage rate went from $0.65.5 to $0.67 when that was done by statute and administrative rule that you had previously. A sort of mirroring that for our internal policy, so...
We don't need to do anything?
Just take note of it. And then you have beverage renewal license, beverage license renewal. I should start over. Which include the American Legion Post 38, Richard Clement Post 299, the Mall of Golf Course. Each of these are in compliance. Because they're tax exempt, their property taxes are not in arrears.
Do we need to approve each one individually, or can we do all?
If you would, please.
I move for...
You want to move all three?
Yeah, can I? Okay, for all three, apparently.
Nobody else.
Richard Clement and... Mall of Golf.
I'll second all three.
Got a motion, all three, and a second, all three. Is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
I want to be called, Arlen, and see if he's coming here.
He's on his way, according to...
He was in Buffalo County.
My tracker.
Okay.
I'm stalking him.
That's a solid.
He gave me permission.
Okay, the minutes of the meeting, you're looking at the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 3rd and the special meeting held on September 25th.
Move for their approval.
Second.
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 25th or September 3rd and September 25th meetings. Is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
Looking at the consent agenda, it includes the building permits, the registered financial statement for August, payroll ledger for August, library reports minutes for August, library's financial report for August, and the draft minutes for September, and you'll be approving the bill's claims structures.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The move. The motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carries.
There is no correspondence for this meeting, and the next appointment is at 4:00. Now this was the claims adjuster from South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. So if you want to recess until 4:00, that's within your prerogative.
Is Arlen anywhere near here?
Well, we lost her to you.
I do. Could he be scheduled to sit? Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, wait. I got one of those. Need to ask Paul, but...
I would assume maybe you can call in and see if he's available.
Should I call?
Yep. Can't hurt it.
Cost is the same.
True.
I thought there'd be a lot more conversation. He hasn't been too efficient.
Almost five miles out.
Tick sign?
Got a big... This one has come on a nut, too.
Okay, whenever he gets back, he's coming on up. We'll be ready for him. Okay, we'll be ready for him. Probably will be there for him. Yep. No, don't tear him away from the farm, but he finishes stuff. Oh, he's got a house. Yeah, watch him jump, come on up. Okay, yep, thanks. That will be out there a few minutes.
Did you give us five minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I did.
Five and a half, six?
You do, huh?
Meeting is broken, I pray.
How's it going? Ground without falling off?
Yeah. She moved.
Of course. It's kind of funny, you might even start to be in the circuit, isn't it?
Yeah, they've had a lot of fun.
We have not much. Quite a few home runs are away, we have had.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of away ones.
It's not settled, they did that this year.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
Yeah. Oh, goodness.
Steve up here? Yep, I will get that.
How many people can you guys fit out there? Seriously? Seriously? I don't know. I was looking for a door.
Yes, please. You go on, go on.
Primal. They are the most comfortable shirts on the street. Brand is called Sprint New or something like that. The other one, I don't know what you put on the other day, silk tattered, the color's all tattered, it's all. No, I just, I'm not sure, so silk and slum. I put lots of, hold it round my shoulder, right down the back, is that? So. Their show was second, it's probably for Carrie. Well, I don't think that.
They have a lot of this. They're massive.
When, when you say, everything you want.
It's quite a hard call.
It's hard.
Well, we know the people who are really going to secure. Here, the point of time is seven, that also, I think.
And you're a little weird, so I'm gonna let you talk a little long.
Right. But I'm, I'm there, he's not. He's four days.
Well, I have a description.
It's important for the, for the, for the. Of course, they can't look through the. I think it was bad, my.
Well, now she's gone. I don't think they got. They're south.
Again. You know, one, two, three. Well, I was not. Oh, I made it. Don't have that on. I hope it's okay. Well, this comes with, I have a problem for her. So, do you hear?
Well, yes, I do.
Well, yeah.
I suppose I can. Well, Matt, it's kind of a tough, it's, it's, I didn't. Yeah, but it takes. So, we can get a little. I don't wish to. I don't know. But, but I think we have, I thought.
No, there he is.
I'm stealing trouble.
Have what you want.
Why? Fancy meeting you here.
These are fast.
They were fast.
We were tracking with us today.
We were tracking you.
What's that?
We were tracking you.
Well, I kept getting caught behind.
I'm trying to get around them.
What are they?
I figured I had plenty of time, so I just sat behind them for the first twenty miles.
Yay.
Let me get this one out real quick. And one more. Another one. Yeah, this time.
Didn't any better, Dan? Huh?
Hey. Hey, man.
Stand here and give me a shelf, we got closer to our.
Yeah.
No, we can do it way before that, that was coming.
The insurance says.
I've got to be here.
Yeah, we've got to.
Excuse me.
Yep, moving.
All right, ready for me?
Well, I don't know, how much is it going to cost?
Trying to tell the drone, you can scratch the drone stuff off, other than, um, there's, they have that on order, and they're still waiting to get it. Uh, pilots, be myself, John Denlaw, Edwin, and James. We're working on getting them some pilot stuff so they can start studying and get ready to take the test.
How's our insurance going to cover on that? Or who's, who's, I guess, on that drone? Who's paying the insurance?
The county?
Yes.
The, emergency manager, yes, county.
County? Okay. We just had this discussion with the coroner. Our, if, if they're not a county employee, our county insurance can cover.
I was just thinking the same thing. They're going to have to put on the payroll here.
Can it be just generally appointed?
They're taking a sign of volunteer, right?
Well, I just, I just.
This does cover.
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
So we're covered. But if we're not, if we couldn't cover her, we seriously don't can't cover anybody else that's not working for the county.
Are these individuals all involved with, uh? We have emergency planning and stuff, is that?
Doesn't matter, they're not county employees. Arlen is.
Yeah.
But they're.
And James.
Edwin?
Edwin, James, and Arlen are.
Yeah.
John.
John, Denlaw? Well, either you or me, or Mayor Reed, everybody's part-time or better, so the county, I'm there, so.
And that would probably. How's Waldra working for us?
He's, uh, part-time for me, he's.
Oh, okay.
He's inactive, he has a bonus, but he's.
Okay. Nope, that's fine. Get out of work a certain amount of hours, we cover, I would assume, under that insurance policy.
I'll find out. Well, I just, but I know even if they, we have these volunteer waivers, with, like, people that come and help and send that stuff, they do that, so.
And our insurance accepts that?
Yep.
They accept the liability for somebody who's.
And workless, Tom?
Oh, wow.
Okay.
So that was just a question I had.
Sure.
What you had, what I just was.
Yeah, and I didn't, because they were all employees, I didn't. Double check.
Do we need to do anything on that, or not?
No, not on that.
Okay.
Paid it for, but they haven't even sent me the invoice, because they don't have it in yet, so that'll be next week. They know that it's. Then I gotta have it in hand, and then have the invoice, and then it'll be once a month, then. They don't get it to me until the day after next month's meeting, it'll be December. Uh, how much did it grant? Um, I applied for a critical point, and was able to get the funding for one critical point out of the five that I, four that I'd asked for. FEMA's cut a bunch of money, so they cut us back, and so I was able to get one out of the four, and I'll apply for.
I can't remember what it is.
It's a modem. That goes in the car.
Okay.
Boost our, basically boost our cell phone signal. Through data and Wi-Fi calling, so. I did extensive research and demoing on it, they sent me a demo unit to try it out, HPs are using them across the state. I think I've only lost one call. Down at Gary Seabird's place, clear down in the southeast or southwest corner. But I lost it for a brief second, and I was able to call it back. So it's, works really well, so I was able to get funding for one of them, and that's on that discount sale, we'll see. That's, the unit's twenty-three hundred bucks, and I was able to get two thousand three hundred, or two thousand thirty-two dollars, so. My responsibility will be two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for, for that unit.
Two sixty-eight?
Yeah, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. With that, I'll need a SIM card, and that's the other sheet, I think, right here, yeah. It's got Verizon and T-Mobile. Verizon, with the research that I've done with all the cell phones in the county, Verizon's by far the top dog right now, with the most service, pretty much from top to bottom. We do have a dead spot from basically two hundred and fifteen, which is the crossroad at Wall Lake, basically all the way from east to west, and then south. You get anywhere down there, it don't matter what you have, whether it's Verizon or AT&amp;T. If you can get a bar and get a call out, you better stop, because you're not going to get one anywhere else.
So is the question whether or not we want to go with Verizon or T-Mobile?
Uh, T-Mobile, so I got, the product I got has two different SIM cards in it, so I can get two SIM cards for it, and I can have two different carriers. So, just to back up a little bit, and I'll get into that, the T-Mobile one, Verizon, um, it's forty dollars a month for the SIM card, for the service. They get a thousand dollar credit, so the first twenty-five months of the service is free. Once it starts, it, it takes two to three billing cycles to get that in place, so the first two to three months I'll have to pay for it. And then the next twenty-five months will be covered under this credit. So I wouldn't have to pay service on that until, for about three years. Then T-Mobile, they did put up a new tower down in the southern part of the county, down by, um, Winters, Brian Winters area, down in Tuba. And they've come online, they're actually going to let, they're sending me a demo phone that I can try for the next month when it gets here, so I'll be able to try the service down there and see how it is. I would take the dead spot out of the county, I'd pretty much be able to have a cell phone service everywhere, data service with this program, and any of the responders that are within a hundred yards of my truck will be able to make home calls and use this service.
Do you have to insert, physically remove one SIM and replace it with the other? It'll take two?
Yep, and I'll use the one with the best service.
Okay.
So that's, um, we're entering into a contract with Verizon, which I already have a contract with them, but it would renew the contract for three years. Wanted to make sure that we're okay with that. And then, in the future, it wouldn't be this month, probably be December-ish before I look into T-Mobile and add their SIM card to it. Till I had a chance to try it out.
Can those extra grant dollars be used towards, uh, service?
No. They don't allow us to use it for service, just the product itself.
So what is this replacing?
Not replacing anything, it's increasing our cell phone coverage across the county. For myself, for weather spotting, for first responders, sharers, if violence involved, that incident, we'll have, we'll be able to make calls, or use data.
Is Verizon, um, the only carrier that has that portion of the county that's dead to it?
No, uh, there's various dead spots all over the county with all the carriers.
Even AT&amp;T has dead spots within Han County?
Yeah. More.
More, more, more.
Yeah.
Okay, and how much of Han County is T-Mobile covered?
Well, they're telling me it's going to be as good as Verizon, because they're able to piggyback off of, I believe, AT&amp;T or FirstNet towers. But I haven't had a chance to try that out yet. Because they technically only have one tower in the, in the county, and that's the one in the southern border.
T-Mobile?
Yeah.
That's why the great complaints about T-Mobile's service, right?
What's that?
People here complain about T-Mobile's service is rotten.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it has it.
Or exists, maybe not exists.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody has it, it's a brand-new tower, went online this year, or something.
Yeah, okay.
But they have the ability to roam on AT&amp;T, so. It should be better, but I don't know if AT&amp;T has ability to roam on their towers yet, I don't know if it's back and forth, or just.
I think they used to, they used to play better together than they do now, I think.
I think now they're rotten.
It's good.
Do we need to approve this, or not?
Well, I have to bring it to your attention, because there's.
Okay, sorry about that.
With the Verizon, it's a, it's a contract change, so I'd have to sign an agreement with them, which I already have a contract with them for my current cell phone, but I'd be adding this next line, so then I'd have to resign that contract. With the T-Mobile, there is no minimum contract, so, yeah, I use them for air, didn't like them, I can get out of them, so.
Sounds good.
Do we have any motion on that?
They would, no, just as a contractual agreement.
I would move that we authorize the Emergency Management Office to approve the Verizon and T-Mobile proposals. Good sign.
I don't think you want to do the T-Mobile, because he doesn't know if he's got.
Well, if he wants to, I mean.
Oh.
If, if it becomes necessary.
Okay.
You want until next year, you say, right?
It might be December, till I get a chance, I haven't got the phone yet, and I want to try it out before I jump in.
Well, you wouldn't sign it if you don't need it.
Verizon contractual, not T-Mobile, if, if you go, no contract, they will. There's always, I hope that one of the other providers will put something on that same tower. But.
They're very tight-lipped on that, they don't, I find they took me two months to get them, and being a conference to get them to admit that they're, they're contracting or working with AT&amp;T.